Good evening. It is Thursday, July 22nd.
It's okay if we don't talk.
That's Lorraine.
I'm going to try again. Good evening. It's still July 27th. If someone could make a motion to come back into public session. Motion made by Rory, seconded by Bill. All is in favor?
Aye.
Bill Rifkin. Bill R.
You've got to be specific.
So, welcome. Hopefully, maybe some people are watching at home because we are here for our first of two summer meetings. Shaina, thank you so much for coming and being here with us tonight. If we can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to start the meeting, that'd be great. Great, thank you. So, we are tonight going to be looking at the district safety plan, also discussing the tax levy and the tax warrant. And it's going to be kind of a quick meeting. So, I would start with some board announcements. I don't know if any board members have any announcements at all. Andrew, I don't have any announcements, but Andrew, if you have any announcements?
I do have just a few announcements tonight. Starting with sad news, since our last meeting, we learned of the tragic loss of our former colleague, Mr. Jeffrey Richardson, and we want to express our deepest sympathies and condolences to his family, friends, all the students who were impacted over many years, his colleagues. And at the same time, we want to respect the privacy of the Richardson family. So, we're going to leave it at that, but we certainly are thinking of all. Making a very abrupt transition from such sad news to very happy news to say that tonight we're welcoming Julia Drake, our newest colleague. Welcome, Julia. You've been with us for a couple of weeks, but this is your first meeting, and we're thrilled to have you here with us. Thanks so much for joining the team. Welcome. In other news around the district, our extended school year program continues. Alex can keep us, lets us know that things are going well over there at Increase Miller, as well as here at the high school and in other locations. We're thrilled to be able to continue supporting our students through the summer. And in other ways, we're preparing. August is rapidly approaching, and we are preparing for the start of school. Since our last meeting, we did conclude our first part of our administrative retreat. We have one more day with our administrators later in August. At this point, though, we're very busy with hiring and preparations and other planning for the opening of school, and we're all very much looking forward to seeing our students come back in September. And that's all for tonight.
Great, thank you very much. I don't know if we have any board committee reports. I'm not sure if any committees met between the last meeting and now. Okay. And I'm going to do board committees now, right? Is that correct? Yeah. So, before our presentations, I want to talk for a few minutes about board committees. Thank you to everyone for sending me your interests, and I really tried to just consolidate that so we could discuss it tonight and look at where people were thinking. If it's okay, I think I'm just going to go committee by committee and talk about it. So, we have four standing board committees, one ad hoc board committee, which is the facilities committee. We have two liaison roles, and then we have one district committee, which is the ERJC committee. So, I think for tonight, I would like to try to get the board committees organized and liaison positions. And I think because the district committee is really under oversight of Andrew, that if, after you sort of figure out where you're going to be on your committees for the board, please just let Andrew know if you'd like to be on ERJC. I know some people have expressed some interest, but I think that may change once you see how many committees you're on or whatever. So, I think let's get the committees settled, the liaison position settled, and then after the meeting, please let Andrew know if you'd like him to reach out to you so you can be part of the equity and racial justice committee, if that makes sense. So, if that's sort of how I'm thinking about it, if that makes sense, everyone. So, audit committee would be, so Ilana is not here, but I have talked to her about the committee she's interested in. She would really like to be looking at some of the more financial aspects of the board. So, she did ask to be on finance, and she also said she could stay on audit. Bill is going to continue on audit, and Bill, I was wondering if there's a possibility that you could chair that this year? Okay, that would be great. And then Lorraine?
Just the proviso of?
From May, yes. So, I think Ilana felt comfortable that she could chair it. After this will be her second year on audit, so she felt like she was a little, didn't feel ready to chair it this year. So, I said I would ask you, and then when you roll off in May, she will take it over for that ensuing period.
Very good.
Okay. Anyone wish that they were on audit that wants to make a trade, or we're good? All right. Finance. So, finance, Bill and Ilana had both expressed interest in being on finance. I will stay on finance because I think it's important to have someone continue on finance, and so I'll chair it also as the continuing board member. So, that will be the composition of the finance committee. Policy committee was quite popular, and Rory and Lorraine will be on policy with Ilana. And Ilana is the continuing board member on that committee, so she will chair that committee. Sustainability, Rory will continue on that. I will continue on that, and then Bill's going to join that. And there's some nice parity because Bill had expressed interest in being on the facilities committee, and I think it's nice to have someone who's on both of those committees. We only right now have two people on facilities. Rory, I know you had been on facilities, but I also know you have some time constraints. There could be a third if you wanted to. Do you want, okay. All right, so I'll add you to that. I just didn't want to pressure you into it.
We'll keep it.
Okay. So, Rory will continue to chair sustainability. And then facilities, like I said, that's an ad hoc committee, so I felt like we could be a little bit flexible about whether we had two or three, and I just did this based really on interest. But I did, Rory, wonder if maybe you just didn't think, weren't sure whether we were going to meet or whatever. So, no pressure at all.
Yeah, no, no, no. I enjoyed the facilities committee.
Okay.
I think it's a really worthwhile committee, and I'm really looking forward to all of the future developments there, so I'd really like to say.
Great, okay. Terrific, okay. So, yeah, there's a spot there. There's a spot there for you. Okay, so that'll be the committees, and I think what's nice is that all of the continuing board members are only chairing one committee each, and we have leadership on each of the committees chairing that is someone who's been on the committee before. So, I feel really good about that. And thank you to Bill and Lorraine for your flexibility in what you are on. We really appreciate that. And then parent council liaison. Marjorie had expressed some interest after being on the board for a long time to return to that role, and I think that's terrific. As long as there's no objections, then I think that would be great. And then Marjorie will continue. She is actually on the executive board of the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association, and in that role, she is also the District 10 representative on, I'm forgetting the word right now.
Nisba resolutions.
Nisba resolutions to the New York State School Board Association. So, I think appropriately, she will also be the Nisba liaison in, kind of in two ways. So, she will continue on in that way. So, I think that's the slate, and I just want to make sure everyone's comfortable with that.
Just a quick question for you. So, I'm not sure what time policy committee meets, but is it possible that it conflicts with sustainability on Friday mornings?
No, they like alternate.
Okay. Oh, okay, thank you.
Yeah, yeah, so they're.
Every Friday morning, I'm sure?
Well.
Not every.
Most, all right, most.
You could try to push policy to meet it, have them both meet it. No?
Come again?
Earlier? No?
It's very tight.
Yeah.
Calendars.
Okay.
So, typically, policy is alternating Friday, where ability and parent council meet on the same day, and then probably one other Friday that admin. And so, it's usually once a month on a Friday at 9:00 a.m.
Perfect, okay.
Rory, would it be helpful to see if someone else could be on policy, so you would just have the Fridays of sustainability?
If someone wanted to switch from audit, I'd be happy to switch from audit, but I can make it work. I can make it work. Just a lot of Friday mornings.
I would be okay being on policy instead of audit, but you needed a chair person on audit.
Was Ilana on audit last year?
Ilana was on audit last year, I think, but no, but you could, I mean, she could chair. I don't think it's that complicated. It's really just, I think that would be fine.
Then Bill, you'd be chairing, because then she'd be chairing too.
Right, she'd be chairing too.
Then you'd have to chair policy.
That's okay until my meter expires.
Okay, and then she would take, okay. So, are you okay with chairing? Because, yeah. Okay, so, so do you want to do that, Rory?
I think it would work a little better for me just because Fridays.
Okay, so, so then let's say it's going to be, audit will be Rory. I'm not on the mic. Rory, Bill Rifkin, and Lorraine. And?
No. Rory, Ilana.
Oh, Rory, Ilana.
And the chair moves to Ilana.
Yes, okay.
Since she's been there already, right?
And then policy is Bill, Lorraine, and Ilana, and Ilana remains, no, and Bill will chair until May. Bill Rifkin. The policy is Bill Rifkin, Lorraine Gallagher, Ilana Schneier.
Yeah.
With Bill as chair.
Yeah.
Okay. And then audit is Ilana, Rory, Lorraine, with Ilana as chair.
Yeah.
And I'll just make sure she's, I'm sure she'll be fine with that.
Thanks for the flexibility.
Okay, yeah, of course.
I could make it work if, for any reason, this doesn't work, we could switch back.
No, no, the two Fridays is tough. I appreciate that. That's, oh, okay. And then I'm adding you, Rory, to facilities.
Yeah, thanks.
Which, again, that's, I think, in terms of schedule, will really depend on when projects start, which buildings you need to look at, or I don't, you know, that's sort of a.
Yeah, I've been on, so I'm familiar.
Ad hoc, as we say. Okay. All right, so I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. This is great. Okay, good.
Sorry, just one last clarifying question. Do we have anybody from the board on ERJC at the moment?
Well, so there's some people that have expressed interest, but I was saying, just email Andrew.
Andrew, okay.
Yeah, so, I mean, I don't know if there's a minimum or a maximum.
You just want to be mindful.
Right, mindful, yeah. So, two usually we've done in prior years.
Yeah, we've had two.
So.
I'm just not particularly eager, but I would be willing to if we didn't have anybody.
No, we had, we had two people that were definitely interested, so I just also wanted to let, I didn't want to, I want to make sure that we have everybody where they are committee-wise. Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you. So, I think the next order of business is going to be.
Can I ask one more question before we go to the next order?
Yeah.
We frequently refer to these things as committees, and then sometimes as subcommittees of the board, indicating that maybe the board is a committee. Like, I'm not sure, what is the appropriate term for these committees? Are they subcommittees, or are they committees of the board?
I think they're. Subcommittees.
Are they subcommittees?
Subcommittees. That's what they're typically referred to as. Thank you.
It's the audit. Okay. Okay, so this brings us to 8.01, which is the district safety plan presentation, and thank you, Lisa, for starting us off.
Yes, I, thank you. Good evening, and I'm here tonight to present our annual district safety plan. This is a mandated public hearing as required by Project SAVE legislation. Project SAVE was signed into law in 2000 after the tragic events that occurred at Columbine High School in 1999. This led to legislation that developed proactive measures that address serious crisis situations related to national disasters, school violence, or death in a school community member. Project SAVE Act recognizes that learning cannot take place in an unsafe environment. Parents want to be assured that their children are in a safe place. SAVE requires school districts to define how school districts will respond to acts of violence and other disasters through prevention, intervention, and emergency response management. The comprehensive approach to school safety and crisis management will be detailed in the district as well as the building level plans. These plans will clearly define the roles and responsibilities of all members within the school community. The primary objective of these plans is to proactively prevent and minimize the impact of any serious incident and ensure seamless coordination between the district and local county resources. Additionally, the plans will address risk reduction and prevention strategies while also focusing on effective response and recovery procedures for various emergency situations. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank those who contributed to the annual safety plan review. This included board members, members of our district crisis team, various district and building level administrators, as well as members of the building crisis teams, and representatives from the Vista Fire Department, Cotonaw Fire Department, Golden Bridge Fire Department, the Town of Bedford Police, as well as our regional safety coordinator from Putnam Northern Westchester BOCs. Emergencies in schools are defined as undesirable events that occur and have the potential to cause injury or illness to members of our school community or disrupt the orderly educational process. Knowing and practicing what we can do in emergency make a huge difference in a case of an emergency. The cost of doing nothing places student and staff at risk, complicates recovery, may interrupt instructional time, may increase liability, may increase the costs for repairs, potentially negatively have impact on the school district's reputation, as well as a road public support. Our district-wide safety plan not only fulfills the required mandates, but also offers valuable guidance to effectively minimize the impact of emergencies. This comprehensive plan is specifically designed to protect against potentially harmful and effectively mitigate damages when faced with adverse situations. The district-wide school safety plan is filed with SED and our local police departments once it is adopted by the Board of Education. Some highlights of other mandates that Project SAVE implements is every employee is trained at the beginning of the school year with mandated mental health component. District and building level safety teams meet on a regular basis. We fully comply with the required number of drills per SED and Project SAVE. So, some updates this year that you will see to our district-wide safety plan is SED had authorized a school day pilot program during the 2021 and 2021-22 school years, so basically during COVID, and which, and in September of '22, the Board of Regents amended this, their regulations to codify this flexibility that would allow districts who would close otherwise during an emergency, they may, but they're not required to, they could remain in session and provide instruction through remote learning and count these instructional days towards the annual requirement. In addition, public schools and BOCs are required to amend their district-wide safety plan to include plans for remote instruction beginning with the 23-24 school year. So, that is the major change you will see, is that appendix to our district-wide safety plan. Some other updates were the inclusion of our Westchester County contract for our SRO. Also, we just wanted to add, and again, thank, that while the Board of Ed reviews the district-wide safety plan before each board meeting each year, this year, two of our board members also took a part of the initial review process, and thank you for doing that, as well as some other updates, as we updated and added new administrators. So, in summary, schools must remain a safe place, and Cotonaw Lewisboro is committed to providing a safe and welcoming learning environment by having such tools as a safety plan. The safety plan sets the framework for emergency management. So, I'll take this opportunity to clarify any questions the board may have.
Thank you, Lisa, very much for presenting that and for a good set of slides that didn't fully get read. I love that. Thank you. And thanks for just adding some extra information to that. Appreciate it. Marjorie?
I had one clarifying question. In addition to a couple of board members having reviewed the plan, is Bill now serving on the safety team? I saw Bill listed in the actual plan itself and wanted to just clarify that.
So, we, Bill's going to help us as far as reviewing the plan each year. The group that meets in both at the building and district level are crisis teams, and during those meetings, there's confidential information that is discussed, what do we do in a case of emergency? So, that is just administrators who are meeting those teams, so we don't have.
So, that doesn't change?
Right.
Okay, thank you. I wasn't sure.
Does anyone else have any questions about the safety plan or the presentation?
Just because we've talked about it a couple of years in the past, and there's been some deliberation around the SRO at the school, are there any proposed changes, or are we sort of locked in with Westchester County now? And we have, I think his name is Brett, who's here at the high school regularly. I think he travels around some of the other buildings from time to time.
Yeah.
Is that, is that plan pretty solid? Are we happy with where that's at?
We, yeah, we definitely have been happy with how that's been going, and in the sense that it's locked in, we have a contract with Westchester County. It's renewed annually, but we do foresee it moving forward, barring any sudden changes from how well things are going at the moment.
Great, that's good. Thank you.
There's a lot of drills and prep inside of all this.
Yeah.
It sounds like a very time-consuming, perfectly valid. Have other drills fallen off, like fire drills? Used to have fire drills, bomb drills?
No.
No.
They have those too.
There's just lots of drills.
There's 12 drills annually, eight drills prior to December 31st, and over the 12 drills, four of them now have to be lockdown drills, so that's required internally. And then we also have an early dismissal drill that takes place in October.
Wow.
But those are required, and the only change that was made maybe 10 years ago was a requirement of lockdown drills, and so that took the place of some of the evacuation or fire drills, so.
Okay, okay. Wow, it's a lot of training and drills, but I don't think it's very well done. Thank you.
I wonder, is there an emotional impact on the students of all those drills, even more so than the actual, you know, potential risk of anything occurring? I mean, it really bothers me that, when my kids were younger, it bothered me more. Now, in the high school, they kind of, eh. But, you know, it just, there must be an emotional or an SEL toll on especially elementary-age kids.
There's been a lot written and discussed about this. It's definitely a point of discussion around the country, and at the same time, I haven't seen anyone that's been willing to make the trade-off of saying, you know, we're not going to be well rehearsed in the event of something, you know?
But are they mandated? So, you said like four of them have to be locked down.
Yeah, we have, there's no discretion that we have over it.
Right. And then maybe one other thing, since it was mentioned in here, the snow day consideration. We, I mean, I don't, I'm not proposing that we change anything, but since there's a change to the rule, have we given that some consideration as to whether we would allow virtual snow days or start to move in that direction?
Yeah, so actually, if I can, I just want to go back to your first question for a moment, because while I said there's no discretion, I do think, and I think we should be proud of, how thoughtfully we handle the drills. Sorry, bad moment.
I could just start talking and.
That would be great. Anyhow, I think we handle the drills as sensitively as we can in those, throughout those drills. I'll move to your second question. Maybe that'll be easier.
About snow days?
The snow days, we are, we're in the fortunate position of having weather reserve days built into our calendar. So, where other districts tend to go down in their number of school days really quickly, and they have a danger of falling below the 180, we have four weather reserve days built into next year's calendar. So, unless we have more than four snow days, we'll be at 185 days. The feedback we've gotten from families over the years is that they actually appreciate the snow days when they happen. I think during COVID, there were one or two times when we shifted to remote. We didn't get a lot of positive feedback about that on those snow days. But I think for now, the plan is that so long as we have the weather reserve days and we stay at 185, we'll keep having snow days. If we get down to that minimum of 180 and we start to dip below, that's when we would think about using this allowance.
Thank you.
Is it possible, and if we have a bad winter, you switch mid-year to say?
Yes.
Allow for the?
Oh, yeah, 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 and that's kind of what I'm saying. If it was a really bad winter and we were starting to see the number of days go low.
And then you don't have to wait for the beginning of the new.
Correct, we don't have to. And also, having lead time is kind of important because it does require students to take the technology home, teachers to be prepared to use it, et cetera. So, some storms give you that lead time, and you know what's coming, and you can prepare, and then other times, you're caught by surprise by a storm, and it's harder to make that shift.
But I would imagine if we expanded all of our snow days and we did have an impending storm, that we would have the opportunity to, for you to sort of, you know, say the principles of the buildings, like have people take their stuff home and et cetera, if it was possible, so. Okay.
I was wondering how we go about monitoring the exterior doors of the different schools?
So, we in our buildings try very hard and work very hard at having a single point of entry, and we, each of our, you know, so the front door, we have a greeter at each of the front doors in each of our buildings. There are, as well as there are our custodians, you know, they, as they, you know, go around the building, they make sure that, you know, doors aren't propped, things like that. You know, our greeters, when they have downtime, they may also like walk the perimeter, if you will, and we do have cameras in the building as well.
We do, we have the video, okay. All right, great.
I think, I mean, as far as I know, in the bond, I think there's enhancements to all of those.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, just a word of caution, that tonight, we're discussing the district-wide plan. That's the only one of our plans that we do discuss publicly, and it's a very high-level plan. It doesn't get into the kinds of details like that, and that's by design. The building level plans are maintained confidentially, and we don't generally discuss security procedures in a public setting. So, it's a great question, but at the same time, we limit our responses because we want to maintain the security of the plans themselves, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you, Lisa, very much. Appreciate it. Oh, and Lisa again. So, 8.02 is the tax levy and warrant, so whenever you're ready.
Okay, great. So, hi again. And so, I'm happy to say that the district did end the year in a positive financial position. Our total tax levy will stay the same as was presented during the budget presentations and discussions in the spring, winter and spring. There was only a small change in the tax rate than what was presented during those discussions, and this was attributed to assessed values changing in each town. These were very minor variations, and the highest variation was actually six cents per $1,000 of assessed value. The tax levy is dependent upon our fund equity. Our fund equity consists of three components. There are reserves, excuse me, which is also referred to as our restricted fund balance. There is designated funds, which are designated fund balance, and these are non-spendable or assigned funds. And lastly, there is the unassigned, undesignedated fund balance, which a lot of times people call the fund balance, which is our 4% fund balance, but that is, but really, ultimately, our fund equity consists of a number of fund balances, three fund balances. Our uncharted total fund equity has increased by $675,000 from last fiscal year. On June 15th, we adjusted our reserves to be used in a fiscally responsible way in future years. We had one significant increase to our restricted reserve, and this was the Teachers Retirement System Subfund, the TRS Subfund, which we increased by roughly $905,000. This is the newest reserve. This is actually the fifth year and in which we are able to fund this reserve. We are currently funding it at the maximum state-permitted levels. This will help ease the burden to taxpayers when the TRS mandatory contribution rates fluctuate from one budgeted year to the next, allowing us to stay within our tax levy cap. Another reserve worth mentioning is our Reserve for Encumbrances. This reserve is going down significantly, and this helps offset the increase we see in the TRS. The Reserve for Encumbrances is considered part of our assigned fund balance. These are expenses that were budgeted for and encumbered in the 22-23. These are expenses that were budgeted for and encumbered in the '22-'23 school year. And for various reasons, either the work wasn't completed, the supplies or the supplies couldn't be delivered before year end. Many of these delays are still related to the continued supply chain interruptions that we have seen in the last few years. And this year, we are carrying over 900, roughly $927,000 less than we did the year prior. So while there's still the supply chain issues, it's getting better, so it's allowing, so we are getting things in quicker. During the budget process, we proposed to offset our tax levy by using two sources. The first was using $750,000 from our reserves. The Board of Ed approved this at the June meeting. We also proposed to budget, at budget time, an additional $2,450,000 of designated funds to offset the tax levy for a total of $3.2 million. This, again, is unchanged from what we discussed during budget time. The designation represents the same as last year. The final classification of our fund equity is at undesignedated, unreserved 4% fund balance, maximum 4%. The state requires that it is capped at 4%. This year, our undesignedated, unreserved fund balance is at 3.8%, and that is our unaudited figure. It could, you know, change as we are, you know, as we go and continue to close our books before auditors come in the second week of August. I've also done an analysis of how we rank in fund equity compared to other Westchester and Putnam school districts. During budget preparation, all school districts are required to submit projections of their fund equity to the state as part of the property tax report card. We once again placed right in the middle of Westchester and Putnam school districts. And this is kind of where I think it's a good place to be. I think that's where we want to be as far as when it comes fiscally, that we are right there in the middle. And of course, you know, this, you know, is something that districts report during springtime, and again, it's a projection, so it's not something that will be our final audited numbers, but it is where we are as far as the projections. All of this information gets us to the purpose of the resolution the board is being asked to approve tonight, and that is to set the tax levy. In May, voters approved the expenditure portion of our budget. Tonight, the board will approve the primary source of funding the budget, which is the tax levy. As I stated prior, the tax levy will remain as what was projected in the budget development process. And at this time, I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
I have a question, and please tell me to defer to another time because I don't need an answer tonight, and it may be a more complicated answer than you want to give, and it's not really related to tonight's resolution, so I'll ask it. But tell me, so the 3.2 million designation is something that we both budget for and then refund every year. It shows up on our budget, and then we refund it every year. And so we're in this process of sort of carrying a $3.2 million fund, I'll call it. Is there a way that we could reduce that? I mean, it seems like we have consistently put it in the budget and then returned it, put it in, returned it, put it in, returned it. And while that seems like it's good practice, and this is separate from the 4%, right? I'm just wondering why we haven't set it at that 3.2 million, if there's some other number that might work equally well, or even if it's necessary for us to, and I think about it as kind of a crutch. It's good to have, but we've never really had to use it. And this may be an unfair question for tonight, and it really isn't all that relevant, so I'm happy to defer the question.
I think, I think we can speak to it a little bit tonight, and then we, I think we should look into it a little bit more. I think, I think actually, there was a period of time where we were starting to try to bring that number down. It's not something that we can make a drastic change to in a given year because of its impact on budgeting process, but it was something that I believe, if I'm correct, that several years ago, we were starting to bring incrementally down a little bit, and then for a variety of reasons, it became more complicated to do that. That might be the part of the question we need to research a little bit more and get back to you.
Fair enough, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and then, and then there are, you know, and the board knows, there are, there are parts of our budget that are just harder to budget as precisely as, you know, people might think that when you have a budget of this size, and there are certain things that we have to have funds available for, even if we, you know, we can't. Often, we talk about special education, for example. We, we know we're obligated to fund special education programs, which we can't predict what they all will be when we're doing the previous year's budget. You know, new students might move into the district, children's needs change, recommendations from the CSE change, we have to have funds available for those things. So that's one example of a budget, of a variety of budget lines, actually, that we, we want to budget conservatively for to be sure we have enough money there should we need it. And then there are other lines also that are a little bit harder to predict, so.
We do carry the fund balance for that same.
The reserves.
The reserves.
Yeah. Yeah, in some, in some cases, Rory.
Appropriated fund balance, I think I'm saying that right. Do we carry the 4% fund balance, whatever the proper name for that is, as, as an additional reserve, right? That's a reserve. And then we have the 3.2 million that we carry during the year, which I understand that we do it, but it's separate from the 4% reserve. So again, this is maybe a little more complicated than we should get into for this purpose, but there is just, I'm just kind of curious why it's always 3.2 million? We put it in there, and we give it right back. We put it in again, and we give it right back. And so, okay.
Right. And so what we are doing is appropriating reserves and part of our fund balance, and that is why actually that undesignedated, unreserved fund balance will fluctuate year to year. So last year, while it was closer to 4%, this year it's 3.8. So, so that, because really, a portion of what we are appropriating to our next year's budget that, that you're referring to. It really is coming also from that whole fund equity as well. So it's coming from reserves, it's coming from fund balance, it's coming from different, it's coming from different portions of it.
Yeah.
So, and yeah, so that's, that's something that we definitely can look at more and see.
Thank you.
You're good. Thank you, Lisa, for that presentation as well. We really appreciate it. Do I need to move the resolution, 8.03? So we're going to move that separately. Okay, can someone make a motion to move the resolution regarding the tax levy for the 2023-2024 school year? Marjorie? Second? Bill S? And do I have to read the resolution or no? I don't, do I? No? Okay. Okay, any discussion on it? Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. Thank you. I don't believe there's anyone signed up for public comment, so we are at 9.01. Now we're going to move right on to item 10, the consent agenda. I don't believe we have anything pulled out of the consent agenda for this evening. Is that correct? Okay, great. So if we don't have anything to pull out, would someone like to move the consent agenda?
Yes.
Move my Marjorie, seconded by Bill R. Okay, we vote on the consent agenda? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six, zero. That brings us to item 15.01, which is an opportunity to recognize donations and gifts. And tonight, we would like to thank and recognize the Blackboard Giving Fund, Michael Kula, for a monetary donation of $1,200 to Increase Miller Elementary School Library for Stream Projects. So, thank you. That's very nice. We appreciate it.
I'll move that resolution.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Marjorie's moving the resolution, seconded by Rory. All is in favor of accepting the donation?
Aye.
Thank you, Marjorie, for the help. And now we are at 16.0, which is an opportunity for a board dialogue or a discussion. Any new topics or anything anyone want to bring up?
This is very minor, but I'm very excited that we have the opportunity to continue to appoint curriculum leaders in our consent agenda, and I completely understand people have different appointment windows, and therefore, we're only seeing a subset. But if there is a way to compile the, the list of, of individuals in their entirety so that the board can be reminded of who's serving, it would just be really nice when we're visiting buildings to be able to be aware if we're, if we're talking to a faculty member who is serving in that role, but we might not have seen it since last year. If the information exists someplace already and it's not too much trouble, it would be so nice to be reminded.
Yeah, absolutely. We can get that to you.
Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
I have a quick observation. So the wonderful gift that we just accepted from the Blackboard Giving Fund, does anybody know anything more about that organization and why they felt compelled to donate such a generous gift to Increase Miller? They seem to be a very large fundraising and, and fund-giving organization, having given out over a billion dollars in gifts. Is anybody familiar with who they are and how it's come to be?
I think it's, it works there, so it's through his employer as they donate.
Oh, I see. So somebody who lives in the district?
Yes, and he's a parent at Increase.
Oh, great. How wonderful. Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Anything else? Sounds like it's not raining, so we should try to adjourn before we can still get out. So would anyone like to, oh, sorry, future meetings. I apologize. Okay, so our next Board of Education meeting is Thursday, August 24th, at 7:30 PM here in the library. Following that, we have our first meeting of the '23-'24 school year on Thursday, September 14th, also at 7:30 here in the library. And then the following meeting will be Thursday, September 28th, here in the library at 7:30. And with that, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn? Rory, seconded, Lorraine, all in favor?
Aye.
Six, zero. Thank you.